Hi, can you hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you really well, yep.
So I got, I'm gonna sign in with two computers, one so I can, you know, do that.
Yep.
I can see my papers.
Go for it. That sounds good.
I only just got here, so the chair might not be the chair you want. Right, so Jackie asked me to make sure that at least one, I was here, so one person was here with a computer. So we have no idea. So some people are zooming in.
I meant that we were supposed to be here.
That can be a topic of discussion, I am. We could just need Jeff Lebel. And I see our guest David has arrived, which is great.
I'm here, folks. I have a couple of dogs that are feeling frisky, so bear with me.
No worries, David.
So Jackie, I believe that Leah's got people in the room with it. It sounded like Ernie and maybe, and maybe Jeff Goodrich, so you've got a quorum, you can get rolling if you want.
Yeah, I just put it on mute until we speak, but those three names are present here.
Great. Good, thank you very much. So I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. And as is required, we have a physical presence and we also have a Zoom presence for our meeting. People have the option of attending either way they would like. Thank you, Leah, for hosting at the town hall today. I really appreciate it. First, and I also want to welcome again David Forbes from the Thetford Planning Commission. We hope Jeff Lebel will be here shortly, but if not, we're prepared to lead, to have a discussion with you, and thank you for coming, David. We have two items on our agenda before we get to David. One is to approve our agenda. Can you hear a motion?
I'll move.
Thanks, Melissa.
I can.
Thanks, Brian. Any discussion? Leah, you're doing a bang up job. Thank you. Okay, I hear no discussion. All in favor? Please say aye, raise your hand. Do we have maybe, let's hear from Leah's room.
Jackie, you're gonna have to do a roll call anyway, so.
We'll do the roll call, sorry, trying to be efficient.
No, you can't do that.
Melissa, how do you vote?
Aye, yes.
Brian, how do you vote on the agenda?
Aye.
I vote aye. Leah, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Ernie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Jeff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Great, okay. All right, so we have 6-0, that's good. I'm just gonna, and our second item on the agenda is a public comment. We have one member of the public here, Linda Cook, that I can see. I don't know if anybody can see anybody else, please tell me, let me know. Is there any comment from the public?
Jeff is raising his hand.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, if we were in a regular session, I'd wanna step into the audience, but I just wanted to make note that since the town of Norwich chose to engage a town manager paradigm from Dennis Pavlik to Herb Durfee, there seems to be a consistent pattern, and I'm not sure it has anything to do with the town managers. That's my public comment.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other, Jeff Lebel has just joined us. Thank you, Jeff Lebel, for joining us. Any other comment from the public? Okay. If not, I want to welcome again David Forbes for attending our meeting. Thank you so much. Just to, by way of introduction, I'm not sure if you've ever met Rod, our town planner, Rod Francis. I'm Jackie Allen, Chair of the Planning Commission, and we have Brian Loeb as our Vice Chair. He's nodding and waving.
Well, we've been doing a lot of that for the past year and a half.
I know. Exactly. In the, in the Tracy Hall, you may have heard their names already, there's Ernie Chikatelli and Leah Romano and Jeff Goodrich, three members of our planning commission. Melissa Horowitz is here and Jeff Lebel, who you've already spoken to. Jeff, you want to lead us through this part of the discussion?
Sure, sure, thank you. Thank you, David, for joining. So, yeah, I mean, we, you know, as I mentioned in our, in the email, we are we're neighbors. You are just to our north, and we are really interested in understanding the issues that you all are working on and happy to tell you a little bit about our issues and thought maybe we could, you know, each take up to 15 minutes to just talk about kind of the issues that are current in your planning commission, and if you were to maybe start, maybe leave a little time for questions, you know, just tell us kind of what you're up to. What are you working on? You, you know, when I exchange emails with you, you've had, it's clear you guys have done a lot of work, new town plan, you got a lot of things on the docket, so just love to hear what you're working on. If you think there are any issues that we might have in common, that's great, but otherwise, just tell us what, what's, what's hot and what, what, what are the things that are on your plate over the next six months.
Very good. First of all, thank you very much for the invitation to, to join you tonight. Secondly, you'll see that I have a co-pilot here. This guy's nine months old and, which means he's a Belgian shepherd and he's still a puppy. And we also have a terrier rescue that was taken off the streets of Austin, Texas. They get along famously, sometimes too famously, so I will apologize in advance if I need to mute my audio. But I will, I will address the issue. I think he's gonna take a backseat. Yeah, looks that way. Okay, that's good. Yeah, very much so. You know, we're certainly both Norwich and Thetford are under the, I call it T-Rock, other people call it Twerk, which sounds too much like twerk to me, so I've always called it T-Rock. But, you know, I think the group of towns that come under the umbrella of T-Rock certainly, just by, if for no other reason than geographic proximity, have a great deal in the way of common interest. As Jeff pointed out, we have been very busy. We completed our, this is all within the last year, we've completed our town plan, our subdivision regulations. We just put through the flood hazard area zoning bylaw. That's all said, and I saw from the front page of the Valley News talk about synchronicity, that you guys are working on your zoning bylaw come the fall. We can all just grab the edge of our desk and, you know, brace ourselves because I know what a thorough, exacting, detailed job that really is, because you have to, of course, as you all know, close the circle and align that zoning bylaw with what you've already done and make it all a coherent whole. At first, I've been Chair of the Planning Commission here in Thetford for about two years roughly. I was drafted, I'll be very plain about it, the man who had been there before me, Jason Krantz, done an outstanding job. But he had done four years and he has a four-year-old daughter who he wanted to have more time with, so I was drafted, as it were, and I was actually the newbie on the board, which was quite a shock, and there's a whole story behind that, but I won't go into that now. So, when I initially looked at the zoning bylaw, my hope was that we could get it done in fairly fast fashion. Reality set in very quickly. It's quite obvious that it's gonna take us more time than I had thought, which is not a problem. Aside from the fact that we will be losing our recording clerk, who is the longest-serving member of our commission and has a great deal of institutional knowledge relative to Thetford and the past history of the planning commission. So he will be sorely missed, we will soldier on, as it were. I've kidded him that I love to keep him on retainer. I don't think that works for non-lawyers, but that's okay. So I come into this meeting with, with two primary goals. One is simple familiarity. I think there's a great deal of value in that. The other is to find areas, as Jeff has pointed out in our email, find areas of commonality, not just in the tasks that we're assigned, i.e. the zoning bylaw, but in the methods by which we approach doing those things. And let me be specific. As we have approached the zoning bylaw, we have been initially confounded by how best to do so. This has gone on for roughly three to four months, I would say. The approach that we're currently taking, and I think it's a good one, and I'll be interested in your takes on this, is that we're trying to identify what, for lack of a better term, would be called macro issues. By macro issues, I mean, and I'm gonna go to my Krip notes, so bear with me. But macro issues such as housing, water supply and water rights, green energy, soil management, things of this nature. Taking those topics one by one, and then going through the zoning bylaw as it currently exists and seeing how that particular macro issue applies to the entirety of the zoning bylaw. It gives us a foothold, a starting point, a keystone, if you will, to review the zoning bylaw piece by piece and do it in a fairly, I hope, coherent and focused manner. So as you guys have begun thinking about this, I realize it's not starting until the fall. I don't know what, if anything, you've done so far. Have you identified an approach that you feel would be, would best serve your, your purpose here? That's an open question, Benny.
I think we have. Jeff Lebel, you want to talk about it from your point of view?
The issue of zoning.
Yeah, how we're approaching the zoning regs.
I think that's probably a question for you or for Rod.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't wanna.
No, I appreciate that. I, I, no, the one thing I would say is, I mean, I think we should answer the question and maybe also, you know, talk a little bit about some of the issues we're working on and then maybe bounce it back and.
If I may.
Through tech team.
Very briefly, I'm not trying to shotgun, shotgun your, your commission here in terms of, you know, hitting you with this huge, you know.
No, it's okay.
Very reasonable.
I'm trying to work from the top down, as it were.
Sure, sure. Yeah. So, yeah.
I think we have a comment here from the room.
Yeah, sure. So Phil Deckard did a wonderful job keeping track of zoning issues. There was a wonderful list that we looked at, and it was sort of set aside for the final town plan rockets. But the idea was that with DRV input and interaction with applicants, there were a number of zoning considerations that were really well summarized by Phil.
Were you, you were able to hear us, okay?
Yeah, that was perfect. Yeah, thanks, Leah. It's working really well. Good job. Yeah, and and so as Jeff points out, we have the benefit of history with our Development Review Board, which is a separate body that reviews specific projects, so zoning in action. I guess you have the same thing in Thetford, I'm not sure. But yeah, okay, yeah, so you're familiar with it. We also have our town plan that identifies the macro issues in the housing and wastewater, green, being, being green. These are all, you know, top priorities and I guess also in the mix, we applied for a grant and we'll be doing study to, it's called the density study, to see how our zoning regs have performed to date. You know, there was a, when these zoning regs were put in place in 2009, there was a certain, I guess, vision of what they might accomplish. We have very few zoning areas in our town and are they doing what, you know, is it doing what we thought it would do when we laid out those very few zones? And so we'll be getting some data back from this density study, either late this year or early next year. And then we're also embarking on some training of our group. In fact, the training starts tonight with zoning 101. So we think, we think that's really an important element to get ourselves ready to be able to do this work. We'll be meeting with our Development Review Board to get their, you know, personal feedback as well as the history that Jeff referenced. And we also are planning a series of public sessions, education slash input sessions, which is something that we did quite a bit of for our town, town plan. So we'll be doing that all over again. I would say those are the key steps that we're following. Anything, any planning commission members would add before I go to Rod? Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Just that, you know, we have a few active subcommittees on affordable housing, childcare, and environmental issues, which we'll also be reporting on tonight.
You mean, including in the, in the zoning effort? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, yeah, that's a good, good, good call out. Rod, anything you would add to the process we've laid out so far before we continue?
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Rod. Yeah.
Sorry. Just that we've made a commitment to start with the admin section of the zoning regulations. And that the density study that Jackie mentioned is a element of the subdivision regulations, and at the same time as the density factor study, we'll also be undertaking a wastewater study, which will shed light on the current conditions in and around the village, which is served by the Norwich Fire District for Potable Water, but everybody is responsible for wastewater management onsite. And so at this point, I guess, for the coming 12 months, there'll be background research being done and then a focus on the administrative section of the zoning regulations before we move on to the more public-facing aspects, which include the number of zoning districts and the zoning district maps. And then finally, the actual language of each section of the revised zoning and subdivision regulations. We would propose to do them as a, as a unit, so do both its regulations at the one, at the same time. And we've not talked about calling out the flood regulations for special separate treatment. I think Norwich maybe has slightly less exposure to the flood regulations than Thetford does. Nevertheless, that'll be, that'll be an area of some importance when we get to it.
Also add on, you know, I, I, one of the things I do is I'm the Chair of our Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And, you know, we have a comprehensive housing strategy that we adopted at the same time as our, well, I guess we adopted a little bit before our town plan and it became incorporated into our town plan, and it's sort of a multifaceted strategy for trying to promote affordability. And one of the pieces of that is to think about our zoning regs in particular, to try to think about other places where we can facilitate the construction of the missing middle housing, so duplexes and triplexes and quadriplexes and town homes and, you know, and obviously, you know, everyone's trying to think about, you know, how do you get the accessory dwelling units to, to, you know, support those, so that's something that we're thinking about as well. So that's sort of like, if you were to look at our housing strategy, that would be like one element. Another thing that we're focused on right now is we're, we're doing an inventory of the land owned by the town and by the fire district. So basically, the publicly owned land that the town has control over and trying to identify potential sites where you could put housing that would rent or sell at below market levels.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up and I'll now try to bring it back down to particulars. I alternate between being a big picture guy and a detail guy, and it's not always work to do, but it's chair, I've gotta do it. While we're on the subject of housing, a couple of, well, one observation and one question. We have just begun partnering with our housing committee. They're officially known as the Senior and Affordable Housing Committee in Thetford. After a period of, I believe it was approximately 15 years of work, where the primary focus was on identifying, designing and building a single affordable housing site. Roughly half the committee resigned when that, when that met fierce resistance from, from residents of the town. So the housing committee is in fact reconstructing itself and in order to aid them in their reconstruction process and also frankly, as a as an adjunct to their efforts and to ours, we've decided to partner with them. And I think that will be very, very productive. The first thing we're gonna do in partnership is to design a survey for the local folks and identify, I think Jackie referred to this earlier, although in a broader sense, information gap. How do people feel about housing, new housing in the town of Thetford? What are their objections? What are their positive feelings about it? What questions arise as a result of this, of this process? I think the reason that the, the former housing project ran to a brick wall, pardon the pun, is that the housing committee at the time did not do sufficient groundwork around PR, around assessing people's feelings and thoughts relative to, to affordable housing. We all know how this, how this can be interpreted. You know, affordable housing, on the face of it, is an amorphous term. Is it Section 8 housing? Is it mobile home trailer parks? Is it, you know, on non? We have been very clear about identifying affordable housing as housing for folks who are to date priced out of what I call the hub, being the I-91, I-89 crosspoint with White River, Lebanon, Hartford, Hanover, that whole area are effectively being priced out or being forced out because there simply are no places available for them to, to find, literally, in terms of the rental percentage, available renting percentage. So we've made it very clear that the housing we're going to focus on is for working people, be they nurses, teachers, carpenters, what have you. Folks with jobs, folks with families or without. And I think that's gonna be the first step in, in reducing the level of apprehension and/or fear that any kind of change like this can, can bring to the surface. Beyond that, we're looking at a number of options, rather than putting all our eggs in one basket as the prior housing committee did. We're looking at ADUs, we're looking at home sharing, we're looking at the town or assisting in purchasing homes that could then be converted to apartments. We're looking at senior housing, not assisted living, but, but senior housing in a more community-based approach. In other words, the more arrows we have in the quiver, I think the more successful we will be by approaching it from a, from a multi-pronged approach. There has been a good deal of NIMBYism. I guess that would be the only term I could, I could bring up. But again, this goes back to people's fear of change. And I think there's also, that fear of change, let me more, be more specific, because I attended both of the public discussions about this. I think there's a real fear, not just apprehension, but fear that whatever town it may be that you're describing, be it Thetford, Norwich, Trafford, what have you, that the town potentially could lose its essential character by introducing additional housing and by default, folks moving in from outside. I understand that feeling. I understand that feeling. I understand the thought. I don't think there's a lot of substance behind the fear. But more often than not, in cases like this, it has more to do with emotional reactivity than it does rational thought. So our approach will be to gather information, first of all, in a Zoom meeting like this across Thetford. And then to do what I think someone here referred to, I think it was Jackie, as a, as a educational explanatory session following that. We will be focusing in on our zoning bylaw like a laser to try to make affordable housing, new housing viable in town. Right now, there are some real obstacles to that. But again, our town plan hasn't been revised since about 2008, or excuse me, the zoning bylaw has not been done.
Same in Norwich. Jeff just posted to the chat, I guess is where you find it, a link, a link to our housing strategy, which is on our town website. And yeah, I would heartily recommend that you download a copy and look through it. I think you'll find some really good information in there. They, Brian, Jeff Lebel and others, our affordable housing group did a great job on that.
Yeah, one, one, one thing I would say about that, David, you know, we, we, we had a setback a few years ago where we had been looking at, at developing a mixed use district on Route 5 South and, and we, we, I would say we didn't do enough outreach. We just did the public meetings and people come and there's a lot of fear and there were some issues where we, we couldn't follow up on that because we didn't have a town plan and it expired. So we had to like backtrack and do the town plan. But anyway, what we decided to do is take a step back and really develop, try to develop a comprehensive approach. We had a lot of listening sessions and a lot of opportunities for one-on-one meetings and, and and I think that helped, I think not having all your eggs in one basket helped having a multi-pronged approach. Because then people don't say, you're singling out my neighborhood, you're singling out this, you know, one strategy, right? You have a multi-pronged approach. And I also think frankly, that there's no, there is no magic bullet to this. There, there are a lot of different types of housing you need, there's a lot of different strategies. And bringing them, you know, thinking about a comprehensive approach and getting buy into that approach before, you know, executing on particular projects, I think can help. Now, having said that, we don't have a project yet, and when we do, we'll see if we run into a buzzsaw, but we hope we've identified some land where we might be able to get a project or two going, so we'll see kind of what happens.
Yes, and, and of course, you know, something, a topic like the housing issue brings up other ones like wastewater management, for example. I just had a wonderful hour-long conversation with the outreach coordinator for the state of Vermont in the DEC wastewater division. Her name is Kristen, and I, I am going to try not to butcher her last name. Okay, it is Ashman Kass, A-S-H-M-A-N-K-A-S. Kristen is spelled C-R-I-S-T-I-N. She was enormously helpful. I initially had called her about wastewater guidelines vis a vis short and long-term rentals and owner occupied residences in Thetford. Short-term rentals have been somewhat I hesitate to say problematic, but I don't know any other word to describe it relation to, to housing in the sense that they, they tend to take quite a few units off the market for long-term rentals or ownership, for that matter. So initially, I was asking her about, about wastewater requirements for all of those. But the conversation branched off in a number of, of very productive ways. And I will be back in touch with her, we're going to ask her to do a presentation, not only to the planning commission, but to the conservation commission select board and probably the town manager as well via Zoom. One of the most valuable things I learned from her was that there is a new technology around wastewater, septic specifically. And this was instigated by a number of property owners who are short-term rental operators who are freaking out because their septic systems are failing under a load they were never designed for. And they're calling state and asking for help. Apparently, there, there's new technology that, depending on scale, would run between $5,000 and $40,000 to implement. That is for the system itself. But apparently, the, the result of the processing of this system is such that what comes out is darn near potable water. So we're looking at this from the perspective of community septic and how we're going to be able to handle that in the future. I, I think our approach when it comes to affordable housing will be small developments probably eight units or less to avoid Act 250 issues. But we'll also be looking at issues like wastewater, like community septic as part of that overall approach. I've had extremely good interactions with, maybe I've just been fortunate, but the state employees I've spoken to over the past couple of years have I'd say universally been very, very helpful with any and all questions that we've had. And that goes for T-Rock as well, they've been, they've been exceedingly good. I did want to ask you before I forget, were you folks advised by T-Rock that there were funds available for your, the housing portion of your zoning bylaw rewrite?
Yes.
You were, okay. The reason I bring this up quite simply is, as you know, I'll describe it as legislative intervention. Apparently, we were going to get these things after the first of July, but it's been delayed until November. The, the silver lining here is more funds may be available and T-Rock's assistance may extend beyond simply the housing portion of the zoning bylaw as well. But do you have any more, and Rod, I probably should direct this to you. Do you have any more insight about exactly what's going on with that, with that process?
With the housing work that Two Rivers is involved in?
Well, the actual, the actual funding process per se and, and how it's been extended from July until November, what, what the machinations there are, as it were.
I think that they're just trying to extend the they've been able to get more funds from DCD and extend the time that they can use them so that more towns can participate. I think that the other part of it is that their staffing resources are always pretty tight. And so for them to cycle through, you know, it's a large, it's a large regional planning commission, it's their town. So I think they're just trying to open up as much possibility to work with as many towns as possible, given the limited staffing.
Gotcha. That was the take of our, of our representatives, Tim Briglin and Jim Masland as well. I was, I was curious if you had the same take. All right. I've been going on here and I appreciate your patience and your ears and what lies between. Is there a particular point of emphasis for you, for you folks in terms of, in terms of, I mean, you mentioned affordable housing. In terms of the zoning bylaw, is there a priority list, if you will? When it comes to revising the zoning bylaw and, and by default, the town plan and the rest?
I mean, I, I think the priorities are, we go back to the beginning where we have the experience of the development review board and their suggestions, that's certainly a priority. And then the housing, the wastewater and environmental issues are the next category or the next, you know, the, the other set of priorities, I should say. And taking direction from the town plan, you know, what, if anything, do we need to do to our zoning regs to help support progress in those areas in a better way?
Jackie, I just wanted to note the time here and wondering kind of if, if there, I don't know if we want to allow X more minutes or we want to just move on. But, you know, if there's anyone else on the commission that wants to say anything or
Yeah, we've, thank you, we've allocated till 7:10, so maybe we could just go around the room and see if others have anything they want to add. Leah, there's a hand up for your room. Why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, Jeff.
Yeah, just a quick comment there. I just wanted to suggest that maybe and this stems from some time ago with Two Rivers and multiple towns where maybe we join as towns to take a legislative teaming effort, especially for us with Jim and Tim, to talk about how we address the wastewater rules. I, I know in the Act 250 consideration process last round, there was a discussion about it making things more amenable for affordable housing and, and created sites, that sort of thing, but it actually went the other way. So the, the Vermont rules are very restrictive, as one who practices every day in this realm with respect to wastewater, and it would be nice to see the rules changed to accommodate science, actually, let me just say real science, with respect to wastewater considerations. And even if we bias that toward affordability or, or higher density or something like that.
Thanks, Jeff. Anything else in your room there, Leah?
No.
Okay. Brian, any closing comments or questions for David?
Oh, thanks. Thanks for joining us. You know, the idea for these conversations was not that this would be a kind of one and done thing, but that we kind of open a line of communication for areas of mutual interest. So I hope you and your colleagues feel free to reach out when other issues come up that we didn't get to today and, and find, find ways to address them together if that's relevant. So thank you.
Well, I, I thank all of you and I, I feel a little bit with this session, much as I, I did after some reflection, looking at this the more we discuss, the more things come up. I haven't even, I haven't even touched on, on our airstrip and helipad proposed bylaw or the short-term rental zoning bylaw that we're considering right now. There, there are a number of issues that we have not touched on, and I understand we're, we're constrained by time. And you guys, I'm sure have quite a bit to attend to. I would like to echo or what was just said about not having this be a one and done. And if we could even extend it to other towns that may express an interest, I think Jeff alluded to this in one of our emails, that we could work in concert and do so in, in coordination with our legislators to try to really gain focus and, and not just direction, but real focus and progress in these areas that we have identified. So again, guys, I see we've hit, well, my computer's telling me it's 7:10. So I want to thank you all again very much. I'll report this discussion to my own planning commission. And I'm sure they're going to be quite interested in the, in the results and what future possibilities exist.
Great. And if you haven't had a chance to capture that link that Jeff sent
I did, I've got it on my, on my browser.
All right, great, good, good. David, thank you so much. Go ahead, Jeff Lebel.
I just want to add, add my thanks, you know, as somebody who recruited you to come here. We, we, we would be happy to reciprocate if that would be of any value to have a representative or to, to come to your meeting and
Absolutely.
Talk some more, so, you know, let, let, let us know.
And let me leave it this way, Jeff, if I may, since we've already established a two-way communication here. If I may, we can continue that and, and carry on this conversation and whatever conversations we deem appropriate going forward.
That'd be great. Yeah, look forward to continuing the conversation. It's just good to make the personal connection and know what our neighbors are doing.
Absolutely. I look forward to doing more in the future.
Great.
All right, thank you very much. Take care.
Jeff, thanks again for organizing that, appreciate it. And it sounds like things can continue on. Linda Cook, did you have something you wanted to add? There's a hand up, but you're on mute. There you go.
Yeah, I would like to know if you're going to include that link in your minutes so that it could be shared with more of us.
Sure, yeah, it's on, it's on a, yeah, this is the housing strategy that we published two years ago, I think, but any, we'd be happy to do, yeah, the more the merrier. It's a great document.
So Linda, that's available on the Town Affordable Housing website. Just scroll down the bottom and it's right there anytime you want.
Right.
What's it called?
The housing Okay.
I didn't hear what you said at all.
It's the Norwich Housing Strategy, and you can find it on the Affordable Housing page on their website, but we'll, we'll also put it in the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, I think moving along, our next item on the agenda, announcements, reports, updates and correspondence. There was some good information in the package and I want to use this time, if you have questions or any comments that is on the material, we'd be happy to entertain them. Brian and Jeff Lebel, I know you, you added quite a bit. If there's anything you want to comment on, please feel free.
I don't have any comments.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer questions folks have about the work that the childcare committee is doing, but nothing else to add beyond the materials.
Thank you. Melissa, anything you want to bring up? Okay, Leah, anything in your area? Looks like everybody's copacetic.
Just a second.
I just have one, one question. It was actually about something at the last meeting, I think. I may have heard what I was, I'm thinking about too. But I couldn't, I, I'm not positive, I thought I, but I thought I heard a comment about that we were encouraged to look at some sort of master plan. It's, and I'm not sure if it had something to do with Dartmouth, Hanover or something like that. And there was a mention of looking at Valley News, which had already been published. I didn't even have a copy of it at that particular time. And did I hear that correctly? And if I did, what, what was it really, what did they actually say? Because I'd like to follow up on that.
Jeff Lebel, you want to respond to that? That's kind of in your wheelhouse.
I'm sorry, the question had to do with the Dartmouth master plan?
Yes, I think that's what it had to do with. I, I don't remember exactly, it was the very end of the meeting. Somebody just blurted it out, I can't even be sure, I actually thought it might have been Rod, but it doesn't really matter who it is.
Yeah, I mean, my, my general understanding is that the, that Dartmouth has developed a so-called master plan that reflects their growth over the next while and talks, and they talk about housing. But they have heard little about what they plan to do in Norwich. There was nothing that I could see in their plan that discussed how they would deal with their facilities on our side of the river other than having a parking lot and a, a bus that would ferry you back and forth. So I, my understanding is that we're going to be inviting someone from Dartmouth to come right to a planning commission meeting, is that right, Jackie?
Yeah, and Rod can respond to that. Go ahead, Rod.
Yeah, Joanna Wickham is expected to present at the next meeting, the September meeting of the planning commission. And, and the top, and the topic will be the plan. So any that, that plan is available virtually from, from the Dartmouth website. If you need help with getting a link to it, let me know.
Yeah, great, thanks. Rod, any other announcements that you want to make before we move on to the next item on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Okay, we're on to the Planning Commission bylaws. Brian, I appreciate your leadership on this.
Sure, thanks, Jackie. And so folks, it's really come up over the last two meetings. And what you see in the materials is a proposal, you know, a draft of some edits to the bylaws based on our conversation. And it's really some minor, but hopefully meaningful suggested tweaks that clarify the roles and responsibilities. the roles and responsibilities a bit and the process for agenda setting a bit. There's also a recommended cleanup on the procedures for the meeting toward the end of the bylaws that we can get into. And then I would also suggest that, you know, to the extent it's possible, we just adopt, you know, in whole cloth, the the principles, the guiding, the guiding principles document from the Select Board that Jeff Goodrich has I has called back to our attention. So maybe we could just go through, if you guys have a chance, unless anybody wants to take a different approach, the the suggested edits. And they're pretty pretty minor, but like I said, hopefully meaningful. So the first, if you guys have the packet up.
Do you want to share your screen, Brian? I think Rod needs to authorize you to do that.
All set. There we go. Okay. So the first is in the second page. It's it's this, like I said, about roles and responsibilities and who is authorized to speak on behalf of the Planning Commission, whether it's to the Select Board or to the two different committees in town or to a member of the media. It's, you know, this issue came up during the open meeting law conversations over the past year, and it's just this is one way to make that explicit. And what it would be is to the extent anybody is authorized to speak on behalf of the Planning Commission as opposed to in their personal capacity, it would have to be so authorized explicitly by the group. So unless that that would that would be the case, then, you know, it would be understood that it would be under somebody's individual, you know, responsibility. So this isn't the only way to address that issue. It's just one quick and easy possible approach. And before we go on, it'd just be great to sound folks out and see what they think, you know, another approach is to say, you know, unless otherwise designated, it's the chair's responsibility and and prerogative to speak on behalf of the group or you know, there's many other ways to to address this issue if we want to do so explicitly. We just put one here in writing to kind of start the conversation and see if this is helpful at all and if this is the best way that we think together on this issue. Jackie, I think Leah has her hand up.
You're on mute. Someone's trying to talk.
Yeah, Leah is on mute, but is also trying to talk.
That, sorry, that the room automatically went on mute for some reason. I'm on two computers. So is the intent to go point by point, Brian?
Yeah, there are just a few here. So this is the first issue. And yeah, so it'd be great to have a little discussion on this one because the other ones are on.
So I know that Jeff has a comment.
Yeah, yeah, Brian. I'd love to have a conversation about the suggested changes. Bluntly, I don't agree with any of them. With respect to item three on number two, where there's a proposed change, last sentence is needed, the voting members present may designate blah, blah, blah. Two sentences before talk about voting members present, present shall decide who shall pres- preside pro temp. So I I think there's no need for that final change. There's another section that I want to get to in a minute, but I think it's critical that the Planning Commission make a decision as a whole in terms of how it approaches communication with anyone, Select Board, media, Chris Katokey, doesn't matter. And I don't think it should ever be a single member. That said, any member of this commission can address anyone as a member of the public. I also want to talk about the new the issue of clerk, which is not brought up in in the changes at some point.
Sorry, I I want to if it's okay, Jackie, I just want to make sure I understand each point that you raised. Jeff, it sounds like you're saying you think there should be other changes to this paragraph. And and you think that more than one planning commission member should have to be present to represent the planning commission. And you want a more comprehensive discussion about representing the planning commission? Are those the three? Did I catch them right?
Well, Brian, I know and and you know, this this can be a discussion over time. I don't think it's appropriate for any member to speak on behalf of the commission. If the commission makes a motion and the majority of the commission votes on that motion, and there's a document to be presented, then that document stands by itself. Otherwise, it's it's really not appropriate unless the planning commission says, okay, Jeff LeBeau, you're going to go talk to the Select Board about affordable housing. Or Jeff Goodrich, you're going to go talk to to the town of Thetford about wastewater, et cetera. By by collective consent, there's no place for any member to be speaking on behalf of the commission without the vote of the commission to do so.
Sorry, that's exactly.
With respect to the pro temp question, that last sentence is is irrelevant because it already talks about the pro temp scenario.
Sorry, I just want to be clear what the intent of the proposed change is. It sounds like the proposed the intent of the proposed change is exactly what you're saying, that it would require an affirmative vote for Jeff LeBeau to go speak on behalf of us at the Select Board on affordable housing issues. That's exactly the intent, but but maybe you're understanding it differently and that's that's fine and I don't know. Maybe you're not seeing what I'm seeing.
Can I ask a question of both Jeff and Brian?
Yeah, go, yeah, go, go.
Is it what? I'm I'm wondering if this, I mean, your observation, I'm wondering if there's a different understanding of what this whole paragraph means, because it sounds kind of to me. And I either you can correct me, I'm wrong. Jeff is talking about sort of a if I understand it, one person, you know, ordinarily in every other commission that I've I've had anything to do with our air board, it's been sort of the chair is just de facto always the speaker on behalf of the of whatever the that panel that is. And I think that's what Jeff's talking about. And your final, and if I understand you correctly, your final sentence is the ability for us to designate somebody to talk about a specific subject, not represent the board in in a general sense. Am I correct?
That's right.
Am I correct in understanding?
Yeah, it so if the question is, as needed, voting members present may designate a member of the commission to represent the planning commission, I'm okay with that. I I want to get away with focusing on Chair Vice Chair.
Okay, yeah, I think, can I can I suggest that that just the wording be tweaked to make the two separate sorts of instances more clear to Brian? It's not that 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 either either of those concerns have to get wiped out. It's that I think this new language does sort of kind of sound, I always, I first thought what Jeff thought about it until you explained it. And pounded it into my head. So I think maybe some language has the language has to be changed a bit to make it clearer. But that has a whole different intent than the sort of generalized representation of the board. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks, Ernie. Jackie, I think Jeff LeBeau has his hand up.
Uh, yeah, and also Melissa, but I I I will I I, yeah, I think my suggestion is that you move this to a different, maybe create a new section nine after, because it's a little confusing. This first number three is all about the conduct of meetings.
Yep.
Um, and it I think it's confusing and that you could see how Jeff ended up thinking that this had to do with the conduct of meetings rather than with representation externally, whereas paragraph eight has to do with subcommittees and appointing, right? So you could simply say, you know, number nine could be that the voting members may designate a member of the committee to repit represent the planning commission, you know, in in external meetings as needed or something like that. I see Melissa also has her hand up.
Jackie, you're muted. Were you trying to call on me? Yeah, sorry about that. Yep. Confused. Are so are there two people making edits to this document? Who's making edits to the doc? Because another thing I'm finding confusing is like, are we discussing the crossed out edits or like, it would be it would be much clearer if this was just like agreed upon language instead of so is this Jackie and Brian making edits and some are accepted or not accepted or?
None of none have been accepted, Melissa. I I suggested them. It's possible that a version that Jackie had looked at also got included in the materials, but none have been accepted.
Okay, but but I was just trying to figure out why they're in two different colors and stuff, stuff's crossed out and some stuff's not. It just might be clear to read for the reader if language is definitely like, you know, if there is a sentence that you guys both agreed on that if we could just get the other words out, then it just might make a clearer sentence to read to understand.
Thanks. No, I I it's possible Jackie agrees with some of this, but even some of it I may not agree on. Like I said, you know, I I don't know for a fact that we all think this issue has to be addressed explicitly at all, much less in this way. It was just proposed language to start the discussion on these subjects. So I would say, don't take it. Don't take it as the position of Jackie and myself.
Okay, okay. So you're just going for something as along those lines.
Yeah, I would say I got the sense from the last two meetings that people didn't oppose some proposed language, me proposing some language on this issue, which was a bit more clarity on roles and responsibilities. And so this was my stab at that. And so it'd be great to see if this is what people understood as that. And if this is, if this would be a meaningful and helpful change for folks or maybe addressing this issue explicitly is not what any of you had in mind.
Okay, well, I think I agree with Jeff LeBeau that it would be helpful if it was in a different section, because I think it does get confused. So I agree with that. So what I've heard so far is that the which in the last red, blue sentence there, pull it down to number nine. And yeah, that's good. Okay. Brian, you want to go through some other suggestions?
Yeah.
Actually, Jackie, do you want to recognize Leah?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I I apologize, but for some reason I'm not seeing anyone's hand raised from where I am. So I don't know why that's the case. I'm pulling down chat, but I don't see any names. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. Leah?
Yeah, I I agree with that move from bullet three to make it nine. And then Jeff has a comment.
Yeah, so under three, there's a reference to the clerk may or may not be a member of the commission. Until very recent years, we used to decide as a as a vote for the commission, who is going to be the clerk? And it's not clear how the clerk gets chosen. And so the bylaws currently don't address how our current staff member has been put in that position.
They so they do here right here explicitly, you have to do it annually.
I don't I don't remember that vote that under which item, Brian, and I don't remember that vote.
Right here, earlier in the same paragraph, it's 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 not a bylaws issue. It's a practice issue, but it is explicit here in the bylaws.
Right, my my point is, though, if there's been a vote about clerk in the last couple of years, I don't recall that vote.
There was certainly a discussion about it. I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead, Melissa.
Because I was the last clerk and no one would agree to replace me. I remember is what happened. And I think I became vice chair and none of the commission agreed to replace me as clerk. And so Rod said he would be clerk.
And this is Jackie. I just wanted to add that the last election that we had, the the topic did come up and once again, no one stepped forward, but Rod agreed to keep doing it. So.
Well, well, so the to to me, well, okay, I'm not contesting the language. I'm simply saying that this commission has not elected a clerk that I can recall. Since, as Melissa points out, Melissa was in that role.
Right.
But we have not adhered to the bylaws.
So can I ask a follow up question to Jeff?
Go ahead.
Maybe I'm going in the wrong direction here, but when you say elect, is there a difference between elect and appoint, or you're just saying designate?
So so the elect process is make a motion second, all in favor.
And and what you're saying is your recollection is we did not do that?
I believe it's factually true that we have not done that, whether Rod agrees or disagrees, has nothing to do with the bylaws.
It was it was more informal. This is Jackie. You know, it was more informal this last time for sure. But well, I guess back to the bylaws, though, what are we, what are we saying in here that we want to add language? Or 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 implement the language? I'm not sure what the
On the case of the clerk, I'd like to adhere to the language. That's my goal.
Okay. And so it already says that I'm just I'm looking down the document, trying to trying to see where it says. Oh, shall elect a chair? I see what you're talking about in number three as well. Okay. Okay. Any other hands raised? I think I found, I don't see any. Okay, all right, okay. Brian, you want to move on?
Sure. So the next the next proposed change is on the next topic that I had mentioned at the two previous meetings, which is a bit more clarity on agenda setting, which is another topic that's come up over the past year. Folks have have wondered what their role is in setting the agenda and and hope their their role was more formalized or more recognized. And so the Select Board and their rules is quite explicit is the best word on this topic. I didn't I didn't think we had to go that far, but perhaps a bit more about at least recognizing current practice and putting it on paper would be helpful so that we could all be held to account. And that's the idea is that we would formally and exhaustively, hopefully, discuss and agree upon the draft agenda items at the end of each meeting, even to the extent of dedicating significant time in a in a given agenda for that topic. But then also recognizing that from time to time, things come up between meetings that could could be added, you know, with with due notice to everyone and that we would also recognize the agenda that's prepared for each meeting as a draft and that, you know, it's our role collectively at the beginning of each meeting to improve upon it as we as we see fit and then accept it and move forward. So, you know, I saw this language as more codifying practice than creating lots of newness for us all to learn. So again, just want to see if if this would be a helpful topic to make explicit and if this is, if this is the right way to do it. What do folks think?
Brian, you want to go around the table? Make sure we hear from everybody. Me, Melissa, any any comment on this, Melissa?
Um, I that's how it seems like we've been doing it. So I think it's reasonable to put it in writing like that.
Jeff LeBeau?
Um, yeah, I I just have a question about the word draft. What does it mean to do a draft? You're not sending the draft out for comment, right? So.
Well, it's a draft. It's a draft because it's not the approved agenda until we all vote on it at the end of the meeting.
Maybe just say proposed agenda then, because otherwise it sounds like you're preparing a draft and then you're going to send it around to ask for comment before the meeting, which is presumably not what you're what you intended, which is fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Leah, any you want to go around your table?
Yeah, Ernie.
Well, I I agree with what Jeff was just saying about the using the word propose instead of draft. Just just to be clear, I mean, I kind of understood it, but you know, it's it's fine if we just change it just a little bit to, I like the basic basic concept altogether, you know. Maybe we're here and they ask a change, but what you're aiming at, I think, is 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 good. And I like it.
Uh, yeah, so this may be the way it's been done in the last three years, but from my experience, not the previous years. Yeah, so this may be the way it's been done in the last three years, but from my experience, not the previous years. So to the extent we keep this language, I'd like to say chair, vice chair and clerk will prepare a draft based on member input. My primary goal is to see the chair and vice chair working together instead of any unilateral paradigm.
I love it. I love it.
Great.
I just want to say I agree with Jeff on that.
And then I have a comment. I, I agree with those comments just shared about chair, vice chair and clerk. I, I have a discussion or question back to the group, but Brian mentioned it, that we're trying to put something down here. And then there was, do we want to put words to that? What happens in the month between meetings? Do we want to put words to that? Or do we only want to say at each meeting? Is, because the way I read it, it sounds like at each meeting is when members can present ideas and that's it. So do we want to add any other language? Or do we just keep it as this?
Yes. So that's the intent of the phrase. And any other pressing business that arises. So the example is that solar project from the last meeting where it came to our attention after the prior meeting, but they, you know, for their own timeline, had to get it on our agenda. So maybe it's not clear enough in that phrasing, but that, that's what that's supposed to address.
Leah, you, this is Jackie, sorry. Are you also suggesting the, that, you know, planning commission members may also email in topics or something? I think that would come under the, yeah.
I, I guess I've just exemplified that I didn't understand the intent of Brian's sentence about when issues arise. I get it. After the clarification, I understand it. And we also can bring up matters when we approve the agenda, but I didn't know how important it would be to clarify that process, not necessarily a bylaw, but the process of the fact that members can communicate with the vice chair and chair about ideas after the meeting.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe it is putting something in there that says based upon member input at the meeting and following as well as other pressing, pressing business that arises, something like that.
I understand the need for a generalization of phrasing. And I'm open to a, a few extra words.
Yeah, no, I'm with you. I, I like that, Leah. Thanks. And I just, I want to make sure everyone understands this because at first I didn't and it's, our own bylaws say we can't vote on approving this tonight. It has to go on the agenda and in the packet for the next meeting as well. So don't feel like you're locked into anything. You have some time to reflect and, and we'll discuss again the next time.
Yeah, and this is Jackie. Thank you, Brian. And I, I think you, you've got some good feedback tonight, maybe based on this. It could, you could send a revised draft to us. How does that sound?
Sure. There, there's just one more, more section.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
One more, one more section and it's, um, it's not exactly, you know, revolutionary for us. I just thought as long as we're going through it, perhaps there's, there's a small additional way we could clean up the document for clarity's sake. And that's in this whole section six on page three, which spells out, you know, several explicit process points about running the meeting prior to a point number seven, where it says unless we choose to be more informal, we will follow Robert's Rules of Order. And so I thought point six and point seven are quite redundant. And to the extent that six is just a handful of helpful, you know, meeting procedures, perhaps they could even contradict some of what we would agree upon in seven, if we choose to be more informal from time to time. So I thought for clarity's sake, and as long as we're going through the bylaws, we could consider removing the bulk of section six, given that we already have point number seven here. But again, it's not necessary, it's not urgent. It, it was just, you know, another suggestion as we're cleaning up the document.
Leah, there's a question?
Yeah, I, I have a comment and then I'm going to turn it to Jeff. So I understand what the Brian's suggestion was and I, I, I do agree with some level of clarification and removal of redundancy. I wonder if if removal is the way or some bullet example like under seven or it could be a possibility that that's my thought. And then Jeff Goodrich has a thought.
Yeah, so, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, Brian, I don't want to delete any of this. I mean, I think that let me just say that I'm not trying to look back, but over the last three years, I would like to see us have a, a, a more formal approach with respect to Robert's rules, which I do not think we've been adhering to. Having said that, I'm not being negative. So if it's, if six gets moved to a subset of seven, my history with the commission has been laypeople getting on this commission. They have no idea what they're doing. And the basic premise of six was to help guide folks through how to, how to conduct meetings.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't see any hands raised. I'm looking again. Okay. How we doing? Looks like. Go ahead.
Yeah, so thanks, Leah. Thanks, Jeff. It really would be helpful to get other folks' thoughts here, because like I said, we don't have to change this. I think it's unhelpful to have both six and seven and potentially contradictory. But if no one else feels urgently about this, then the next version you see at the next meeting won't have proposed edits to the question.
So we have some comments here. Ernie, Ernie has a comment.
I just, I'm just wondering. I, I don't have Robert's rules memorized. If what I'm wondering is if number six is actually Robert's rules. It sounds like it. The way I've just been, you know, learned Robert's rules from listening to the various chairs over the past 25 years that I've been on board, one board or another in this, in this town. And so I, I, I first saw these corrections are these strikeouts. And I was thinking, why are we doing that? Because it's just a nice little handbook. You know, excerpt for somebody to have. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a, if it's a contradiction or, or redundant. It might be a redundancy, but it's easy to find the, the planning commissions, regulations or rules than it is to find a, you know, thumb through a, a book on Robert's rules.
Okay. I, this is Leah. I'd like to add something to regarding point six. And we might need to have follow-up discussion in upcoming meetings. I, while I agree with some of what's been shared today, I come from a different experience and background, which is a bylaw is different from a training manual. And so I would agree in keeping the information, but putting it in an appropriate place so that it is a valid reference and guideline for current members and future members. So if it is meant to be a training material, let's make sure it's in an appropriate place. If it is meant to be a law, let's keep it here. That's, that's my thinking.
Okay. Melissa, any comment?
Yeah, I think it's repetitive. I don't think we need it in here.
Jeff LeBeau, you still there?
I'm here. I, I find it weird that this is in our bylaws. It doesn't feel like a bylaw. It feels more like a, yeah, I would agree with Leah in general. I, I, in general, I mean, I, I like some level of formality. I do worry at some degree at the extent to the minutia of the formality. I don't really know how to balance that other than to say a lot of these motions are things that we don't ever talk about. A motion to table. You know, a point of order. It all just seems like a level of, of formality that we don't usually, at least not since I've been a member of the committee, have we really talked about that? But at the same time, I do appreciate some level of formality because I think it helps people feel more comfortable. I think the most important thing is that everyone have an opportunity to be heard and to have their say and uninterrupted before we move forward. So I guess I would favor taking it up.
Brian, you have what you need?
Yeah, so you know, I, I like Leah's approach as much as I would like to strike it. I think it, it is helpful to have a bit of a guide for people to understand the not just the formality, but a bit of the rigor that we hope to have in the meetings. So, so perhaps in the next draft, it, that I would propose it would be as a you know, bullets under seven, there would say exactly, Leah, as you suggested. You know, unless otherwise specified, Robert's rules or these, these general principles such as blah, 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 blah. Because right now, when you say the following rules shall apply, and then in the very next section, you say, well, unless you say something else, it, it just doesn't make sense. So I, I like Leah's approach. It'd be great to, to get it down on paper and see if it resonates with folks next time around.
Okay, thank you. So Brian, you will take the action then to use the input from today to create a revised version. You all have the revised version here that's in front of us. If you have any other comments or things that you want Brian to consider, please send him your input. You don't need to copy anybody else, just send it to Brian and then we'll have a revised draft to consider at our next meeting. Does that sound right? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thanks a lot. Okay, next up, we've got training on zoning regs. Yippee. Rod has agreed to take us through an introduction. And then we can talk about next steps. Okay?
So can people see my screen?
I can.
Okay, great. All right. So, um, most of you were probably on the Planning Commission back in 2019. And we were involved then with the town plan and it was part of the public outreach process to explain what the purpose of land use regulations were. And so this set of slides came from a public meeting that was held originally September 2019, but predictably, none of the information has changed very much. So I'm going to rerun it. And then if people have got questions, and I hope that you do, then we can use that as a springboard for discussion. The one thing I want to say is that by starting at a very basic level, what I'm encouraging is that people's at this point in the process, spend some time thinking about the very basic building blocks of land use regulation in Vermont, how they come together and what the intent is. And then what your role can be. So as you might expect, the subdivision and zoning regulations and their associated maps are available on the planning and zoning website page from the Town of Norwich website. So I'm hoping that all of you have begun to look at them and think about how they work both in a day-to-day way as well as perhaps at a more conceptual level. Because as the planning commission, you're responsible for drafting amendments to the land use regulations. And so while it's important to know on some level what the day-to-day practice is, the, the major purpose of the planning commission is to actually set a policy in the land use regulations, which is why you're charged with doing it. And to be clear, and this is more a matter that comes up tomorrow night at the select board. The way it's framed in statute is that it's the planning commissions per view to draft amendments to the land use regulations and go through the steps similar to the town plan of having them, of approving them after a series of public hearings and then move them on to the select board where the public hearing process starts up again. And then the select board gets to either adopt them or not, or suggest amendments. There's some horse trading usually at the end around the acceptance of amendments where the planning commission can be involved in a difficult environment where very difficult decisions have to be made in a very charged, short period of time. But that's generally the way it's done in Vermont. So the select board cannot initiate amendments to the land use regulations on their own, and they cannot direct the planning commission to make them. I just need to make that clear from the get-go. A larger concern here actually is that what we're really talking about when we talk about land use regulation is kind of an interplay in a large part between the market and regulation. So the regulations, in fact, to some extent reflect market behavior and influence market behavior, but the relationship, I would say, is much more strongly in favor of the market influencing the regulations rather than the other way around. There's some other important pieces here to explain how land use is regulated at the town level in Vermont, the presence or absence of infrastructure. And then deeper questions there about whose infrastructure it is and how it's controlled and how it's operated. The availability of land and the suitability of land for development. The availability of financing, which is actually not very well understood in this market or in the space, but is an important one. And then lastly, the availability of labor to actually do anything, which again is a challenging question in the current context in Vermont. So, um, there's three different areas that the land use regulations control. They are zoning, subdivision and access. Access is the last one and it seems to be the most minor in some ways, but it's actually quite important. So that's how any driveway or private road is going to connect to a public highway. And that's generally the purview of the Department of Public Works Director. But in Norwich, the administrative process has been split off and is part of the Planning and Zoning Office. And the standards that are adhered to are basically the basic V-train standards for road design and so forth. But ultimately, if you can't get an access permit, then you're not likely to get a subdivision. It's a kind of a deal breaker right there at the beginning. And in my time in Norwich, there had been more than one instance where actually obtaining reasonable access has been the single biggest challenge to the subdivision of land. So then that leaves what zoning does. Zoning and code standards to protect, so this is straight from statute, to protect the health and welfare of the community, of the community. And it's understood to me that the way to do that is to minimize development impacts and to use land efficiently. And then you'll remember that our guest earlier this morning, earlier this meeting referenced character of the district or character of the neighborhood, which is a traditional concern of zoning and has been drawn into a more controversial discussion in the last couple of years around first of all, the observed phenomenon of NIMBYism. And then secondly, the need for some regulatory changes to be made to address things including chronic lack of access to affordable and decent quality housing. So it's, it's just want to asterisk the whole question of character of the district in those terms. But it will come up and you will see a lot of reference to that when we start the public hearing processes. So there's basically three responses that you can have to a zoning permit application. It's either permitted, it could be conditioned in various ways, or it could be prohibited. This is an outtake of one of the pages from your zoning This is a um outtake of one of the pages from your uh zoning regulations. Current zoning regulations which were adopted and on July one, two thousand and nine. This is a standard burnt rock um format for uh land use regulations. In Vermont circa two thousand and five or so, burnt rock was a four small consulting firm made up of three people. Uh, that worked across Vermont and many towns have their regulations now fairly heavily modified. Over time, over the last fifteen or twenty years. Um, so it's a pop a pepper statement and then it breaks right out into uh two columns. Identifying what permitted, what are the permitted uses and what are the conditional uses? A permitted use is something that would um able be able to be permitted by the zoning administrator without having a public hearing. And going before the D I B. So it's cheaper and quicker. Um, but the what it means to be permitted is the big question. So um. Conditional use review is broader in scope and it um. In a large part considers offsite impacts. Um, we use the so-called dimensional standards, so the lot size, the setbacks, which is the distance you can have a structure from the property boundary. Or the presence of buffers and height restrictions both on. Buildings as well as fences and accessory structures so that that. By using those so-called dimensional standards, we minimize the offsite impact from any kind of development. I should also add here parenthetically that how we define development is an important first step and Norwich's. Description, um, definition of development is 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 broad and in some ways problematic. And then um. Lastly. There are specific standards for parking, signs and landscaping, which in uh influence the physical form and function of of a neighborhood or a district. So this is a flow chart representing what happens when somebody actually wants to do something that meets the definition of development or structure. Uh, in Norwich. So on the far left hand side of the screen, you'll see a big arrow with size and scale. The bigger the size of the project, the more rigorous the review, which seems fairly reasonable and in Vermont, um. You end up being um required to obtain a so-called act two fifty permit as well as local permits if the. Scope of the project involves more than ten acres of. Um, the project area is more than ten acres in size, so the disturbance, if you like, is ten acres or greater. Or there are ten dwelling units or more, which. In in other jurisdictions would be regarded as pretty small. So um, that's sort of a doubling up, if you like, of development review and that's the level that it that it occurs at. So then from the top left corner of the box, you see an application. It goes to the zoning administrator, which also happens to be me when I'm not being clerk of the planning commission. And then the question becomes whether it's a permitted use or a conditional use or whether the activity is taking place in a special flood hazard area. If it's conditional or special flood hazard area, it's required to go to the D I B for a hearing and then there's a whole set of steps for that. Uh, which will lead first of all to a series of public warnings and public notice so that a butters are aware that the project. Is being proposed. And then there'll be a public hearing and then out of that public hearing comes a written decision and a permit. Um, the. Decision could be um appealed and if it is appealed, it would go to the environmental division of the Supreme. The Superior Court of Vermont. If it's permitted, as you can see here, it's a fairly, it's a fairly short path. You go straight from zero review through to the permit and then there's the issuance of the permit. Um, the highway access question here down off to the bottom of the left. Um, is a kind of a um. Side side issue to some extent. If the highway access is needed, the public works director is the one that's going to do the inspection and then that process, like I said before, is going to be handled in our office. If the project requires wastewater or wetland delineation or um. River, a river corridor consideration because of its act two fifty status or there's life safety questions raised by the use. So somebody proposing a school or a childcare facility of a certain size. Something such as that of a place where there's going to be public assembly. Then there'll be other state permits that could be required. And so that bottom. Kind of goldish tan section of the screen addresses all the necessary state permits that would need to be put in place. Um. Municipalities in Vermont are unable to enact land use regulations through twenty four V S A in particular sections forty four eleven and forty four eighteen. Regional planning commissions are enabled through uh twenty four V S A forty three forty five. And they are able to, but don't have to, provide technical and legal assistance to municipalities. In the preparation and maintenance of plans, capacity studies, bylaws and other implementation activities. Regional planning commissions cannot overrule municipal land regulations or dictate local development outcomes. However. They can, through the process of setting their own regional plan, require member communities to adhere to standards. Uh, for and and so standards in their land use regulations and designated districts. Zone consistent with um designated districts that the regional plan establishes and in fact, the two rivers regional. Plan um does that in particular, it does it for. The um so-called interstate interchange areas. And uh that impacts the on off ramp at ten A and then the section of route five south between. Ten A and the Wilder border. I see that Leah's got a question in her group.
Thank you. Um, I just a quick question regarding process. Would you like us to hold questions to the very end or ask questions on the slide?
Ask questions on the slide.
Okay, so Ernie has a question for this slide. Is that what it, yeah?
Okay, um. I I'm not sure I understand um the the what it says the uh uh RPCs cannot overrule. Uh, land use regulations. Um, and then yet, on the other hand, it says, you know, then the internally, they can create use policies and so on. And what I've seen in practice is it it seems that. What I don't understand is why do we have, why does the town, for instance, have to uh run its town plan and have it approved by truck? And why do we have to um? To you zone our town according to uh truck's uh policies? If they're not supposed to be dictating to us?
Um, well, they cannot dictate, but then um it's up to the town whether it wants to be a member of the regional planning commission or not. And seek approval from the regional planning commission for its town plan. So there's, there's a way in which we're kind of collapsing two different streams of um regulatory process together here, Ernie. So. The town of Norwich has made a decision to maintain its membership in the Two Rivers Regional Planning Commission. By being a member, we're also deciding that when we as a town adopt a new town plan. We will submit that for approval to the regional planning commission, the Two Rivers Regional Planning Commission. And to get approval, the plan has to conform to. Policies as as they are laid out in the regional plan, developed and approved by the regional planning commission. So it's to some extent, it's a group of peer entities. So it's Thetford and and us and. Uh, twenty eight other towns in Northern Windsor County that make up the voting membership of. Uh, the regional planning commission. And through a process of public participation. In developing its own plan. So in other words, the regional plan reflects the input of each of the constituent members, all thirty towns. And staff. So the town has the opportunity to go, you know, we just don't agree with this and we're pulling out. And that would leave you with the ability to have an adopted plan. And so therefore conform to twenty four V S A and then have land use regulations that are consistent with twenty four V S A. But we wouldn't be able to access um. Grant based support for developing town plans in the first place, maintaining land use regulations. Or a bunch of other planning exercises. So it's uh definitely a situation of give and take. I would say ultimately, the regional planning commission doesn't have the power to dictate. Um, local land use policy, but it can be.
Core.
Yeah, I think there's a level, you know, it's like I said, it's a, it's a matter of give and take, you know, the town. Needs to contemplate what it gains from participating and adhering to those policies. And and what it gives up to do that. And some towns. Ultimately make the decision to leave the regional planning commission um area and get by without. Accessing state funds to implement their land use planning program. Um, I would say towns generally the size of Norwich and larger don't do that. Um. I also think it's important at this point to point out, although it's oh far away from the zoning regulation discussion. That we have the opportunity to influence the policies that the regional planning commission adopts. We may or may not be successful in changing people's minds, but that that, you know, as a member. Community of the regional planning commission, we have the ability to do that. Um, so. Um. I think the key point here that I want to make before I move off the slide and I don't want to mean to cut you off, Ernie, but I I think it's an important discussion, but it's not. Necessarily on point right now. Regional planning commissions. Adhering to their policies have party status in act two fifty proceedings and um that's where they exert. Uh, quite a bit of influence or can exert quite a bit of influence. And so. Towns per se don't have standing in an act two fifty proceeding, but regional planning commissions do. So um. And so again, that last point's really important. In a Vermont context, an eleven unit housing development is considered a large project and requires local and state permits. And um. In some ways, developers or um applicants in that process feel as if they have to run the gauntlet of two different jurisdictions. Um, which can potentially give contradictory um outcomes.
Overall, it discourages development.
Um. Well, that's I I don't know if I'd go that far, Jackie. I mean, what what I'd say is that most developers that I've talked to. And most engineers and other people involved in the development process like like land use attorneys and so forth. Will be really clear that they will, they will, they will say very openly that they do everything in their power to avoid going through the act two fifty process. Because of the uncertainty and the expense. So yes, you'll get a pattern of development that. Is consistent with that, nine acres of, no, that is of development and nine and nine houses at a time.
Right, yeah, when I say discourages development, you're not going to get a lot of housing out of, out of anybody because of, you know, it's just, everything is on a small scale.
Right. So turning back to um the Norwich zoning regulations, they're, like I said before, they were last amended in two thousand and nine. There was an amendment to the subdivision regulations more recently, I believe, two thousand and thirteen, but that was minor. There are five zoning districts. They've all got exciting names. Um, rural residential um is actually. Counts for ninety seven percent of the land area of Norwich. So one zoning district uh totally dominates. Um, the the map in that way. Um, and that's uh something that we'll come back to. Uh, after we've done some background research, I guess. Uh, the subdivision regulations can um contain the density factor calculator, which um. Determines the amount of subdivision based on characteristics of the land, whether the road is paved or not and the distance from Tracy Hall. And so um, that's somewhat unique to the Norwich experience and as you know. We're about to go out and have some analysis done of how effective that's been at. Providing the pattern of development that the town plan um asks for or looks for. And then um. There, the so-called conventional industrial district, which is the eastern side of route five south between ten A and the Wilder border. Uh, every commercial or industrial use is actually conditional. In that zoning district currently and mixed use is also conditional, as is retail. So it's a very oddly constructed. Zoning district in terms of its uh purpose statement and in the way it's regulated so that basically any. Form of development in that air, in that zoning district requires a conditional use review, which again. Increases the level of complexity and and uh the ability for uh. Well, it require, it requ, it requires a level of review that means that um it probably has a. Disincentive effect. Jackie, you raised your hand.
Yeah, is that what you meant a couple of slides ago when you said how we divide, how we define development in in Norwich?
No.
No.
No, no, there's a, there's a, there's a section in the back of the zoning regulations that's called definitions. And that's what I was referencing, the actual definition of structure and development in the regulations is very broad. So this is, this is the zoning map up close. Everything that's white is rural residential. To the town borders, that weird um big red plus sign down the bottom is actually kind of a. It's, it's supposed to be a a north pointing arrow. I don't understand it. I've got there, but that's okay. So the village business sent district is the little mo blob in the middle and then you see that blown up. On the edge of the map here. Um, the shaded area is village residential one and this um, there's also. Uh. Village residential two, I believe, which is just um. The northern end of Church Street before it comes back to meet Route five. Um, and ninety one. And then um this area to the east of ninety one. The McKenna Road neighborhood down onto River Road uh is also village residential one. And so the only area for non-residential activity that you can see is this a pixelated. Pink area, commercial industrial, which starts um. South of ten A and um takes in. Um, there are all lands to the east, to the railroad tracks basically and down to the Wilder border. So um. This has come up before. Um, and this comes up back to to uh Ernie's question. Um, if a project requires act two fifty permits, then the two rivers policies will be considered by the district commission and they will be generally upheld. Uh, and if it's a contest, if you like, if it's, if there's a conflict between the town policies. And the two rivers policies, the two rivers policies will prevail. Um. And lastly, going back to that Rubik's Cube that I used at the beginning. There's other issues here in play about land use regulations for Norwich. So. Norwich maintains uh class two and class three roads and bridges and culverts on class four roads. There are a number of class four roads. And there are a number of legal trails in Norwich. Um, but um. We Norwich maintains class two and class three roads totally. Um. We all know that there's the Norwich Fire District, it provides potable water from from wells to the north of the village. Uh, to the village area. Um, it's not in the exact map. Um, it doesn't map exactly onto the village, but it's pretty close. And then um. Wastewater is handled onsite by property owners and since two thousand and seven. The state has been issuing wastewater permits prior to two thousand and seven, it was the town. And so um. That. That it will continue, it'll continue to be the state that issues those permits. Um. So. And then going again, I've been getting, going back to the Rubik's Cube, what you can see here is that there's sort of a very specific geology associated with Norwich. And that in conjunction with state permitting processes have a really significant impact on development feasibility. Um. Again, we've already heard about this tonight, community scale wastewater systems are permitted, but they're expensive. Um, actually. They're not just expensive to install, they're also expensive to permit. Um, actually, they're not just expensive to install, they're also expensive to permit. And um the lingering question that makes them less popular than they might otherwise be is, of course, the complexity of. Resolving the legal legal obligations that go with several parties using the same system. Who's responsible for the maintenance, who's responsible for replacement, who's responsible if the system fails or is causing. Uh some kind of impact offsite, um how do you do that over a long period of time, like the life of the system, say forty years? If the. Um, identity of the group of people who own it are are responsible for change over time, so that. That makes them, you know, less popular than they might otherwise be. And then um. Hopefully, along with the density study, the wastewater study will help place uh some of these questions in a in a better context, so. Jackie, you've got your hand up still, I don't know whether I answered your question or whether you want, whether you have.
Oh, I, am I supposed to take it down? Sorry.
No, it's okay. You're all good.
Sorry about that.
All right.
Great. Okay, thank you, Rod, appreciate that, um, yeah.
So if there's any, if there are any other questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, just want to express my thanks to Rod for doing it, um really appreciate. Really appreciate it, I one, one quick tweak to the sl- slides for when you do it. If you, in the future, the fire district is not exactly contiguous with the provision of town water. There are houses from here and there that are in the fire district, but not on town water.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so let me, I'll have to practice saying that more carefully, there's two weird things going on. The fire district is not an exact match to the village district, which doesn't help. And then within the fire district, there are houses, some of which are in the village, that are not on town water and like, I don't quite. Know which ones they are, I've heard of this reference before. Oh, you, yeah, oh, you're one of them, okay, that's great. Um, look on the, look on the bright side, you're in control of your entire destiny, um so. What your inputs and your outputs, that's great, um. So uh, yeah, what can I say? Uh, welcome to the rest of Vermont, um so um. Yeah, it's, that's a week, that that's, that's a good level of detail, but and it's. It, I don't think it's necessarily unusual, but it is kind of a weird thing to contemplate.
Yeah, okay, good.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah, any other comments, questions? Just um, as a next step, uh, Rod, I know you mentioned it earlier, but uh reading our current zoning regs is a responsibility that we all have and getting familiar with those. Yeah. I don't know when the last time was you read them or if you've read them, but um making sure that we go through those again. And um coming up at a future meeting, we will be with the DRB and I want to make sure before that meeting that we've all absolutely read them, okay? And of course, questions discussed with Rod, et cetera, okay?
And just on that point, I think, I think. At the point where we're ready to actually discuss the doc, the documents. I will be proposing, you know, not just um some language tweaking, but a complete. Shredder and, you know, just like a new document, I don't think we're. In the situation where there's anything about the structure of this document that we'd want to preserve, which is not to say that there's not. Policies or standards that we don't want to preserve, but the the way the document is structured and a lot of its content, we don't want to preserve.
There's probably a better, yeah, a better way, okay. Well, I guess one other question, you mentioned B S A twenty four, uh the the read, the gives us the authority to do these regulations, plus it gives region authority. Are those documents, I know we we passed those around previously, but are those something that we should also be aware of as we do this work?
Um, where it becomes, yeah, I mean, that's actually a good question, I'm glad you brought that up. For people who have not been involved in this kind of drafting of regulations before, it's going to come as something of a disappointment potentially. But you're, that you're gonna be, you're gonna get sick of me in particular saying, oh, that'd be great, except for twenty four V S A, blah, 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 blah. And you'll go, what? And I'll go, yeah, you can't do that. Um, or you absolutely have to do this, there's just no getting around it and um. At the time, you know, the easiest way to encounter it is at the time, if you really got insomnia, um you're welcome to. Read twenty four V S A on your phone or something, uh as long as you're not driving, um so, you know, it's always there, but um. I, I read it for a living, I would, I don't encourage anyone else doing that.
Thank you, Rod, thanks. Uh, our next item on the agenda we need to approve are July thirteenth minutes, do we have a motion? Thanks, Brian, do we have a second? Thanks, Ernie, I think I see a hand there, thank you very much. Okay, great, um, any discussion? Uh, am I missing any hands? Let me just double check, I don't see any hands, okay. Uh, we'll take a vote then, um I'll go around the table so we can hear everybody, uh Melissa.
Hi.
Jeff Leau.
Hi.
Leah.
Hi.
Bernie.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
And I vote aye. Thank you, and thanks, Rod, for doing the minutes, um. In terms of other business, does anybody have any other topics? Oh, Leah has a hand raised there.
I just caught it now, I, on the agenda, there's a reference to June minutes, I didn't know. Was it typo or are we supposed to do something?
No, that's a typo, good catch.
Thanks.
Oh, okay.
A little light, but good.
Oh, yeah, there you go, that was on our agenda, thank you. Okay, um, any other business anybody wants to raise? Yeah, go ahead, Ernie.
Did we ever just discuss that um policy or procedure, whichever you want to call it, regardless of when somebody has not called in and said they're not going to be here? Um, and instead have, stop waiting, you know, at least attempting to contact them and see if they're on their way or something.
I think um we've had, I think we've talked about now a couple of times, I think what we said was as a courtesy, you know. We could certainly extend that courtesy during the meeting, I don't think it rises to the level of policy. I mean, as a planning commission, our job is to plan well, and so we should be able to plan to be in a meeting, but at the same time. If something terrible happens to one of us or or something.
Or in the case of, you know, the notice doesn't make it to the person, that has happened.
Well, except, except that we all know when the meetings are, you know, that I would say, and there are multiple.
It was when we were changing the schedule.
Okay.
Process of changing the schedule, so I had it wrong.
Okay, so extra, I I think extra attention on that, but there are. You know, quite a few opportunities to know when the meeting is and it's our, I think it's our responsibility to know that, Melissa, did you want to say something?
Oh, no.
Okay, okay, all right. Um, so let's, maybe can we put this to bed um in terms of. As a courtesy to each other, if we're expecting someone from a me, at a meeting and we and we don't hear from them, I guess one question related to this. Does um, does Pam still inquire who is coming to the meeting or how does that work?
No, she doesn't do that.
Okay, all right, because we do that to know if we had a quorum or not, which we, you know, but anyway, I don't know if it's necessary.
For, for a while there, I believe, the question of whether we were gonna have a quorum was a bigger management issue than it has been for a while now.
Yeah, Zoom is, uh, Zoom is really.
Probably because of Zoom and then probably, you know, there was a, there was a time when, you know, Susan would would be in South Africa or something and. And and it didn't take, it didn't take too much for us to be one person short of a quorum. So that courtesy um call or email from Pam was designed to try and. Ensure that we're all going to meet a quorum. Um, I mean, if people feel strongly that that's a useful thing to for them to have, um then we can set something like that up again.
Yeah, um, I personally think it's useful because I don't know who, you know, unless people, anyone tells me, I don't know. If I'm not expecting anyone or I should be expecting someone, but um Leah, go ahead, you had something?
Well, it was about that topic, I recall that we discussed Ernie's question about reaching out to folks. And we discussed that last meeting, but from what I can see, if it's not an extra. Stresser or workload to Pam to to do that, that could help us in determining who's going to be here. Um, another way to do it is the reverse, which is almost um assume that people are coming and you write to the chair and vice chair or group if you're not. I mean, so either or, I think we can agree what we like to do.
Yeah, uh, go ahead, Ernie.
Well, I remember, e- especially on the Development Review Board, uh, which I was on for fifteen years, almost from day one. Um, we would get, when we would get the. Um, agenda.
Yes.
It would be a question, are you planning on attending?
Mm-hmm.
And and, you know, that was, it was, it was simple to answer and you, you know. And and you'd be followed if you didn't answer like by the day, you know, there'd be a question, are you coming? Um, but there was, so there was some follow up, but the thing is you were expected to answer in advance. And that was, it was a no brainer, it was.
Sure, yeah, we did it for the planning commission for many years as well, I I know what you're talking about, Ernie, um, it's, yeah, and that worked, I think it worked pretty well, but um. Rod, you're closer to Pam in the office and life of, life with COVID, I guess we're calling it now, not after COVID, but um. Uh, do, what what would work better from an operational standpoint? Have Pam do what she used to do or people could email me if they're not coming to the meeting, I, you know, I I'm okay with that, just so we know who to expect or who not to expect. I I mean, I would, I I'm assuming you're coming unless I hear from you kind of a thing, what would work better from an operational standpoint?
Um. It's not an ex, it's not a huge extra burden, but there are plenty of these small things that.
No, that, I understand it.
It, it, you know, it, yeah, that's up, that's what I said. So I, I, I think I generally operated with the assumption that when people get appointed to boards and commissions, they're. They're kind of on it about whether they're going to make it or not and um. You know, and I think that for the most part, people are, and it's okay, and again, you know, changes in schedules or changes in arrangements can lead to slip ups, but. Um, I think generally people are pretty good at staying alert and staying. Yeah, so I I don't know how valuable it is, I mean, even in the D I B context, we don't, we don't do that anymore.
Yeah. Ernie, you have something else?
I was just gonna say, I mean, my own personal thing is, since we haven't been asked, I hadn't even thought about that. Is, I think every single time, with the exception of that last meeting, I have always made, I've notified somebody in advance of the need that I was coming. Uh, so that should have been expected of me at the very least, and it wasn't.
Mm-hmm.
Because I haven't, I haven't missed that many meetings either.
I remember being surprised and we, I was being surprised they weren't there, yeah, so, okay. So why don't we do this, um, if if for whatever we, for some reason you can't make a meeting, please let me know, um, let. Uh, and then if we don't see you there and we're expecting you, we can reach out with a text or something, that's not a problem, okay? Okay, good. Thank you for um for bringing that up, um. Any other business? I just want to recognize uh Rod for um uh filling in some big shoes, uh. Rod, you want to talk about the town manager?
Um. I'm just checking, I'm unmuted, um, so as you know, the town manager's contract. Um, is not being renewed and his last day is August the thirtieth and. Uh, on the basis of seniority, I, even though I've only been in Norwich for three years, um, I'm the next one up, so I'll be the acting town manager. From August thirty going forward, I understand that the select board is attempting to. Get a interim town manager through the services of Vermont League of Cities and Towns, but I don't know how soon that'll take place and so. Yeah, I I should say that um depending on the workload and the length of time. It may actually impact our schedule a little bit, I'm not sure at this point, um but it will be another set of meetings to service and minutes to do. Um, and postings, so it'll be time consuming, um, so just you should know that there's a possibility that. Uh, there'll be some interruptions.
We have to all be nice to Rod, okay? Uh, Leah, you have a hand up, go ahead.
Yes, um, I just wanted to uh mention, I wanted to allow time for us to get through the agenda, but um. This was one of the first meetings that I've attended where we didn't really go over every. Every little detail of everything that came in the packet, so I just want to acknowledge all the work that was done in in the people who presented items in the packet. Those were some really great reports, so I just wanted to thank people for that.
Good to, good to. So our next item number eleven, we want to talk about um our September fourteenth agenda. We'll do the same format, okay, uh as far as we know, that's the way the world is working uh now, is where we'll be in town hall and we'll be on Zoom. Um. And Leah, Ernie, um, uh, I know Jeff's not with us right now, but uh anyway, if we want to retain, if 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 you are. Happy to retain a town hall presence, that's great, if you need to be on Zoom, let me know, okay? Then we'll make some other arrangements, that's all, all right, we'll leave it that way, is that okay with you, Leah?
It's fine, um, and then we'll just follow regulations as far as math and whatnot, should other people join us?
Exactly, exactly, yeah, and if it gets, you know, if we need to change or it gets crazy or we want to do some, need to do something else at any point in time, just say the word and we'll do that, okay? We we should all be comfortable, that's all, we should all be comfortable.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think that uh. The governor's uh press conference today uh hinted at um. You know, not exactly going back, but certainly indicated that they're. They're reconsidering the current settings pretty closely. And the strong recommendation is that if you're in an enclosed space, the precaution that you should be taking is to be masked, so. We, I've not heard anything about going back to the Secretary of State or I guess we, I guess what they would need to do is to establish another state of emergency. With certain dates and then under the state of emergency, the open meeting law requirements of being physically present go away, but. Uh, I, there was some hinting that they might reconsider that, but they weren't there yet.
It didn't happen, yeah, it didn't happen yet, okay, well, we'll keep our ear to the ground on that, Brian, you have.
Yeah, just um Leah and Ernie, the room you're in, uh the connection is great. Uh, next, on the experience of the childcare committee, I would say, don't go upstairs, uh the connection is terrible, so let's keep booking that room.
Okay, yeah, you're right, you're right, actually, the 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 little jiggy in the wall in the small conference room is garbage.
Mm-hmm. Okay, the jiggy in the wall is garbage.
Is that the technical term for?
Yeah, I'm on the IT committee, that's the, that's the technical term.
I know that, yeah, and Leah, whatever you're doing with your PC is worked beautifully too, the sound was perfect and so is the visual, so that's worked great. Um, okay, for the September fourteenth agenda, uh we're looking for Joanna Whitcomb from the Hanover or, I'm sorry, the Dartmouth Master Plan. If I have that right, um.
Well, she's, yeah, she's the planner for Dartmouth College.
Thank you, planner for Dartmouth College, yeah, great. Um. Okay, and is there anything else uh that we need? Oh, we have Brian and the um code of, or the bylaws, right? And if all goes well, I guess we could be in a position to vote on that, is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, I, yeah, there's. I I can't piece out how material of a changes I shouldn't make before we can actually vote on it, but maybe. We can all assess that together at the next meeting.
Mm-hmm, okay, so there's a possibility of voting on it, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I think so.
We may be in a good position to vote on it, if all goes, if you can hear the feedback incorporated, people have a chance to review it, they're happy, then we could do it, okay? Uh, Leah has a hand up.
Do we need to do anything else with vision and guiding principles? Or is that?
Didn't really, we didn't really talk about the select boards. Right. Maybe it's just because people didn't say no to it. You know, I I like that stuff, I know I've talked with others who like that particular document. I I'd rec, I'd put it in with the suggestions next time around for what we adopt. Um, that shouldn't come as a surprise because it was in there this time, but we didn't have a chance to talk about it, you're right, yeah.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, good. Okay, anything else um that we need to uh that we know of right now that needs to be on the agenda? Rod, any follow-up from any other things that are in flight here that we should be considering?
No, I don't believe so at this point.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, um, that sounds good. Jeff, did you say everything you wanted to say?
About what?
The agenda for next time?
I I have no comments. I need to.
Thank you. Okay, great. All right, so then we're on to public comment. We have uh any comments from the. Going once, going twice, going three times, and then um I think we just need a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Leah.
Actually, uh, Jackie, um, just tomorrow, tomorrow night at the select board, there'll be a discussion of the sign section of the zoning regulations. With regard to the Black Lives Matter sign on Main Street, so if people are interested in. Really getting into the weeds about one small section of the zoning regulations, but with uh. A really big connection to Supreme Court decisions, then um it'll be on, I believe, the early part. Of the select board meeting tomorrow night.
Approximate time, I know I could not be lazy and look it up on the agenda, but do you know what time it's supposed to be on?
It's gonna be in that weird space where they decide to do things like in or out of the consent agenda. So it's very difficult to predict the time. I would say. In the first half, so any time before eleven P M, I guess.
Oh, come on. Okay, all right, yeah. Okay, all right, uh, so we have a motion on the table to adjourn and I think that Leah made and I didn't hear the second, I didn't know. Melissa seconded, okay, or Brian did. Okay, uh, all in favor, I think we can do a hand raise or a shout out. Aye. Okay, you got it, Rod. Thank you very much, guys.